I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think before we go into our moment of silence, it might be well to mention the Marham situation and nearly a miracle, I think, for that gentleman to be with us. And the fact that the Bengals, the city of Cincinnati, the Bills, and the city of Buffalo, all joined hands and possibly brought that young man back. So if you'd all just join me in my silence. Thank you. I might mention, since it's a little bit of a new wrinkle, if you do plan to address council tonight, there's a sign up sheet on the podium there in front. That would be in the public session later, but you do have to sign up for that. All right. First item is review and approval of the agenda. Motion, please. I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
Motion by McKay, second by Learman, that we approve the agenda as presented on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Agendas accepted. You also have before you the minutes of December 15, 2022, regular council meeting. Motion, please.
Move to be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion by Osborne, second by Michael Albright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? First meeting of the year, we have to accept our committee assignments. Something that Andrew and I needn't wonder where, obviously, the president, president and clerk of council are two-year cycles, so they do not have to be reapproved, but we do need to approve the committee assignments, which you have before you. If there are any questions, if not, appreciate a motion to approve the committee assignments.
Motion to approve the committee assignments as presented.
Second.
Motion by Learman, second by Osborne, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. We all know what you're doing. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President. A couple of things. The Christmas cold snap really caused water problems in the city. And we have water department employees that had to respond to frozen pipes and other issues. Josh Smith was called out twice on Christmas Eve night. Oh. Men are hard to train. Go ahead and turn along. I've probably got a few mic holders here. As I was saying, Josh Smith was called in twice on Christmas Eve night and twice on Christmas Day, three more times December 26th, and again the night of the 27th. He visited a total of 14 addresses for first aid during those responses. Police and fire department also helped residents turn off the water in about 10 additional locations. Separately, Chris Riley and Adam Simpson gave them a Christmas Eve and a Christmas Day to address problems. On Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, the utility billing department contacted nearly 30 customers whose meters showed there was a continuing leak from December 28 through yesterday, Wednesday, and additional 21 customers asked to have their water disconnected to air first aid. The water department issued a press release few days before the cold snap advising customers that frozen pipes were lucky and how to avoid them. I think a lot of us have forgotten what it meant if it dropped below zero, in a special blizzard condition. Also, customers are reminded to sign up for the automatic notification of leaks in their plumbing, sign up by clicking Manage My Water Consumption. I think Andrew is trying to pull that up right now. There's a link near the bottom of the utility billing page on the city website. Have any luck there, Andrew?
Yes.
There we go. There we go. And I know this is part of the job, but what outstanding employees, you know, they give up their Christmas to take care of our citizens, and I couldn't be more proud of them. Along with our own Jessica at Transit, we just got an ODOT grant for $55,480. But nobody can outdo. Wastewater grant was in this last federal spending, and we received $400,000 towards our new wastewater plant. And I also want to give a shout out to Congressman Carey, who no longer is our congressman, right? But he put that in budget for us, and we're going to get that money. If you get a chance, you ever bump into him, thank him. Thank him so much for helping out his hometown. Let's see. Probably here tired of hearing about code enforcement. I get tired of doing this. We've got property. The Burtson, I don't know how many of your community, the whole series of pictures in here, I'm sure you all received. This case built for 772 days. It is an absolute piece of crap. Steve really manages it for absentee landlords, and needs to be torn down. And we need to enforce it and make him do that. But to the fairness of our city, and it's not fair for the citizens, look at that name. And after that, Ray Drave, Jeff Hawke, would you come forward, please? Jeff, have you got anybody that'd like to join you? Please invite them to join us. Oh, yeah. Don't forget the microphone. Are you ready? Forty-two years.
My baby, this is my daughter Jessica, and she came tonight to watch me. And I got a couple of bosses and coworkers back there. I thank them for coming. They're all part of the water department with me. And I can say there's some familiar faces around. It was an awful dry time during the next day.
She's saying I don't buy that phrase.
Anyway, it was a good life. The city treated me well, and I hope they continue to treat employees good. Because you get the best group I've known to be down there right now. And I'll miss the city every day. I think retirement's maybe a little bit overblown, like some people think, because life's all about journey and not the destination.
Now I want to read Jeff's proclamation. Whereas longtime water department employee Jeff Hawke has been a pivotal part of Wilmington and Clinton County community. And whereas Jeff started working for the city in July 27, 1981, and upon retirement, Jeff will have served the city of Wilmington 41 years, five months, and 12 days. Whereas with integrity, a tenacious work ethic, and analytical mind, and excellent communication skills, he has used his gift to continually improve the operation of the water treatment plant. Whereas Jeff's dedication to his work has helped ensure the citizens of Wilmington have access to abundant supply of safe drinking water. And whereas Jeff's last day with the Wilmington Water Department for the city of Wilmington is July 31, 2022. Now therefore, I, John N. Standforth, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, Ohio, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby recognize Jeff Hawke and offer my heartfelt congratulations to this dedicated water professional, earning 42 years of service to the city with dedication, experience. Jeff inspired and guided his fellow operators to provide the best service to this city. Congratulations, Jeff. And now I want to introduce Ryan Flotter, the new editor of our news newspaper.
I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. I've been in the newspaper business for about 23 years now. I've been the editor at the Washington Courthouse Record Herald for about eight years. So I will continue in that role in Washington Courthouse, but I've also been tasked with being the editor here. So taking over for the retiring Tom Barham, I'm sure you know. And I really look forward to getting involved in the community and getting to know everybody. So that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
Back to you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alker Mans, do you have something for us tonight?
I do. I do. I'll say that the place on my forehead's not a new fashion statement, just a little PSA is where your sunscreen. Enough said about that, but that's on the side. You do have your better places, as promised, a listing of the transfers per your resolution that you passed back in December. Thank you very much. That worked very well and helped us immensely to get through that year end and to get things balanced out very quickly in just a few days here at the first of the year. So if anybody has any questions about any of these transfers, hold it up. You've got it answered. Thank you very much.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving into, oh, I'm sorry, Safety Service Director.
I just have one piece of legislation, Mr. President.
Mr. Shire.
Yes. Before I get to that, I want to introduce, I don't know if we formally introduced Adam Simpson to council as our superintendent for the water.
Superintendent for the water department? Rip, I'm going to have to pass the mic to you, so do you want to give a few comments?
Yeah, I know. So, yeah. That might throw me off. But, but, yeah, Adam, as already did, as superintendent, couple months ago, he's able to hit the ground running. Like, we were talking about, he kept running over the K D, through the freaking end, and he's lived with the city 15 years, about 10 years to 2000, right? Sorry. And he knows better than I do, so we're in good shape. So it'll be around more and more, and I love him running the place. It's hard to let go, but it'll be like a guy doing it, so.
I think you also live two doors down from me, too. All right. I just have one piece of legislation tonight. It's a grant from the, let me read it here, from the curb side recycling grant in the Clinton County Solid Waste District. I was actually surprised, because usually they rotate who is the chair on the Clinton County Solid Waste district, and they insisted on me being the chair again this year. So I got nominated to be chair of the Clinton County Solid Waste district. So I'm excited about that, and I would like for you to accept a grant and do through reading so we can get our money for a recycle grant.
Can someone bring that legislation over, please?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution 2301, expecting the accepting of grants from the Clinton County Solid Waste District, motion for first reading.
Second. Motion by Learman, second by McKay, first reading, resolution 2301, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? First reading passes, please.
A resolution accepting a grant from the Clinton County Solid Waste District, curb side recycling grant, and declaring emergency. Motion to suspend the rules and give the resolutions second and third reading.
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules. Do we have roll call votes?
McKay?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eglon?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
Motion Carey, do we have second, third reading?
A resolution accepting a grant from the Clinton County Solid Waste District, curb side recycling grant, and declaring emergency. And motion, please.
Second. Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eglon?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2301 passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Now we move into council committee reports in action. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
We have no official legislation tonight, but we are going to have some legislation coming down the pike. The city hotel lodging tax committee met, and they're going to be sending us some legislation to go over. It's going to go through committee first and make sure we got everything correct that we want to, and then it's going to finally come to city council. So just be expecting that. That'll be in February, but it's been a long time coming, and we just, we need to, we need to get along with it. But we've got to make sure we're doing it, we're going to do it right, and so we'll just stay tuned to this chamber. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. City Services Committee, Mr. Eglon.
No report in this order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
No report, Mr. President.
Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perkey.
Wow, I've got a few things to talk about tonight. Let's see, the first item on the agenda tonight for me is a second reading ordinance 2265. If you remember in our last meeting, we discussed granting an access easement down at the end of, what was it, Morris and Southwind there? We went through the map and kind of discussed this last time, so I'll spare the detail. I've been fishing for questions and haven't received any about it. So I don't know if anybody else had any questions or anything that we could answer beforehand. I think the most important thing to remember here is that should there ever be need for us to have access again, if you read through all the legislation there, it does provide us the right to revoke the easement at their expense. So that made it a pretty open and shut case for me, but I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to have everybody talk about that. It is a 20-foot easement with 30-foot on the existing property. Any other questions? Okay, we'll see. Done. We'll move for the second reading, reading of ordinance 2265 by title only.
Second. Motion by Perkey, second by McKay, second reading ordinance 2265. Roll call, please.
You did it. Turned me off my game. Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eglon?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Motion Carey, do we have second reading, please?
In ordinance authorizing the granting of access easements for the Southwind, South wood.
Thank you, sir. I'd ask for the third reading at our 19th, our next meeting, so that's all we have for that. Moving on to item B, it's the first reading of resolution 2302. We are adopting a new public records policy. So you should have all received a copy of it, if you have a chance to read through. We should have had this document ready and available all along, but it had gotten lost in the shuffle somewhere along the way. So needed some updating and modernizing. I remember the first time we looked at the original version, the way my client didn't even include email in it. So we needed to make sure that this was up to date, current with the laws and the technologies now available. So are there any questions about this? There, I've got our director of human resources is here, so he can help answer any questions we have about that.
Does that break a request, fill the sign with the Ohio bicycling sunshine rules?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's often not when you see it updated, that is because something, law has changed. Much like, I'm sure at some point the chief will bring to us, the state will change the traffic law, and we have to update our ordinance to match. Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing done, we move for the first reading of ordinance 2302 by title only.
Second. Motion by Perkey, second by Albright, resolution 2302, first reading, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Do we have first reading?
A resolution adopting a revised city Wilmington public records policy.
Thank you. May I ask for the second and third reading at our next meeting? Well, ask for the second reading at our January 19 meeting.
Second.
Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. It may look familiar to some of the fellow council members up here. At our last meeting, we had some legislation coming forth for a vote regarding a mortgage on the Holly Block building at 23 South Sound Street. And there's been a buyer, there's a very long, complicated process for this, but in negotiation with the old property owner, there are a lot of liens on this property. And so in order to clear up some of those, the property owner was able to take out a loan. And the attorney who was working up for us told us that he believed that the IRS would settle their lien holder position for the amount that was owed and forgive some of the penalties and late payments that were there, but they did not. And so in the last two weeks, we thought at one point we wouldn't have to because our portion of, we were the first position holder on. So our portion would be taken care of in the transfer of the building. We had a $27,000 outstanding loan there, and I was speaking Justin Dickman, who's the land bank, is the person who orchestrated this, and he believes that the ultimate liability would be about $15,000, but of the 27 will be on us too. But it is a very, the property will, this will complete the sale of property, provided all of, everything gets signed and taken care of through the IRS, the last check on the checklist. But their attorneys have negotiated with Justin, I think they figured out a way to clear up those taxes from their, for their interests. So it was something I thought we weren't going to have to deal with two weeks ago, and here it is back in front of us. But it is timely because of the, they tried to come around it by the end of the year, but they have to, we're definitely in a crunch for it. So the original copy of the, let's flip it through right now, the original copy of the deed is right there, the original terms of it from back in years ago, is it? What's the date on that?
About seven?
Ninety-seven? Ninety-one. Ninety-seven. So, yeah, the, I know that, I believe Justin has reached out to most of you to kind of have a one-on-one conversation about this, because he wanted to be here tonight, he couldn't. He was recently appointed to the Ohio Land Bank Board, and they had an emergency meeting to appoint a new director, and I see you going to be here. So I've got a few notes. I'll try to answer as many questions as I can, but are there any? I'm happy to see any recovery of that money, to be honest.
Well, it's an important project.
It's a very big project. But, I mean, there are a lot of those, a lot of those things that we kind of just, after a while, you just assume, you might never see it, so it's nice to, nice to see some recovery part of it anyway. So, all right, seeing no questions or comments, I'll move for the first reading of resolution 2303 by title only.
Second. Motion by Perkey, second by Eglon, first reading. Resolution 2303, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the release of a certain mortgage encumbering a certain real property in the city of Wilmington, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give resolution 2303 a second and third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules. Do we have roll call, please?
Albright?
Yes.
Eglon?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion Carey, do we have second and third reading?
A resolution authorizing the release of a certain mortgage encumbering a certain real property in the city of Wilmington, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Move to pass resolution 2303 as read.
Second. Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Eglon?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2303 passes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody considering that all in one evening tonight. The last thing on my agenda tonight is the first reading on ordinance 2301. If you recall, we're, last year when we discussed city employee pay, we discussed a 2% increase, a cost of living adjustment for last year and for this year, which is, that show good faith. I mean, obviously, the inflation has gone well above 2%, but that is, that is something that we want to try to do as we look at a larger overall compensation package for the employees of the city. We want to appreciate them and try to get them adjusted. So being early in the year, we don't want to drag it out. We want to get this taken care of as quickly as possible. So I'm happy to open any questions or discussions, but there was an attachment of the change in steps that everybody saw up there. That's the biggest thing, historically, that will stick with us. But it is, we're unprecedented at times as far as the economic impact of inflation and other things. And I think the 2% is a nice step in our direction. So any questions I can answer about that? I have several subject matter experts here. Do you need any? Okay, excellent. Then I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 2301 by title only.
Second. Motion, second, for first reading, ordinance 2301, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Do we have first reading, please?
In ordinance amending ordinance number 022-08 to increase wages under the 40-point pay plan for calendar year 2023 and declaring emergency.
All right. Thank you. Because it is timely, I'd like to have the second and third reading on our January 19 meetings. And believe it or not, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right.
It's not that bad.
Thank you, Mr. Perkey. This was our's numbers tonight. Do we have anything from the Public Works Enterprise Committee?
There's no report tonight.
Thank you. All right. You have the new reports to council in December in 2022, annual report, 2023 projected revenue, and income taxes for our December 2022. No questions?
Move to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion by Perkey, second by Albright, to accept. Reports as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Reports are accepted. That ends the business of the council tonight. We do open the meeting up to the public now. I think anyone, anyone that wishes to speak has signed up. If not, please do so now.
Does anyone else need to sign up?
And of course, we'll keep with our previous time office. Our clerk will ask this to speak when she's ready. Our clerk will, uh, ask those that want to speak, once she's, once she's ready.
So, uh, Greg Pittsir, one sixteen copies done. You just let me know when you're ready.
Right, uh, had me in conference, uh, and everybody, and so, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay.
And, uh, anybody else in the office that wants.
That wants one, okay, I will take care of that for you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay, I wanted to come here to make an exciting announcement tonight. In our last recorded meeting with Chief Ron Pittsir, he agreed that he would reach out to the FBI and investigate my daughter Casey Pittsir's suspicious, suspicious death. We mentioned that we would write up that letter and concerns that chief has agreed to forward the letter and request where the FBI could come investigate. Thank you, chief, for agreeing to do the right thing, and thanks for the great Christmas present for our family and all of Casey's supporters. Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Attorney, here is your own copy of that letter for you, and this of the many concerns regarding my daughter's case. Chief, you have been ordered the mail, mayor and safety director, I do hope you help the chief and request and get the FBI in here to investigate my daughter's murder. Mr. Mayor, you stated publicly that the city of Wilmington takes all allegations of misconduct very seriously, right? Very seriously, you said that. Which is why we have sought independent investigations to do allegations against our officers and staff. Thank you for formally agreeing to address my allegations appropriately by requesting that the FBI investigate my daughter's death. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, please, guys, I will give you confidence.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're having. Uh, Darrell Petrie, five-five-one-four State Route, three fifty.
Yes.
Um, you can try to use this, I don't know how much battery I have. You're okay?
Yes.
All right, and, uh, you just let me know when you're ready.
Ready, I got three minutes worth of questions to ask and some requests. Um, first, I'd like to request the city's written responses, in, in the written responses that I receive, let the context not be taken out of my, my questions like it was in my last responses. I'd also ask the city not to skip over any of my questions like it was done in my last responses that I've received from the city. And I'd also ask that the appropriate person who can answer my questions, answer the questions, because I've had your, your clerk answer the questions, and she said she can't answer on Mr. Shidiker's behalf or any other, other people, so I'd, I'd request that the right person address the questions being asked. Uh, regarding the two thousand nineteen sex scandal, um, my question is, which exact account did the two thou, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar victim payout come from? And whose pocket did that money come from? I would also like to request the bank transaction form showing which account and where that money came from. Um, and I wanted to know what happened to the whistleblower of that sex scandal, uh, the twenty-year city employee who spoke up about the sex misconduct that was taking place in city hall, um, what happened to her? Was she fired? Was her job title terminated? Did she have, did she still work here today, and if not, why did she leave? And, uh, why did she leave and where, and why did she no longer work with the city? Uh, did she receive a settlement also? If so, how much was that settlement for? How many other victims of the sex scandal were paid off too, I wanna know that? And were all the other victims of the scan, the scandal compensated? Um, what about the, what was the total amount for all the settlements? And which accounts did that money come from? And whose pocket did that money come from? Did it come from the citizens of Wilmington's pockets for these settlements? I also checked with the municipal court, and one of the clerks did confirm on a reported phone call that the city municipal judge, that a Wilmington city municipal judge did in fact seal that case. Um, my question is, on what grounds did the city have to sail it? Um, because from what I have read, the, the case was illegally and conveniently sealed by the very own city in which the scandal festers ends. Uh, please specify the exact reasons of why and how that case was even sealed. Um, Mr. Shidiker, my question is directly to you, you admitted to me and Mr. Tony Thomas that you have seen everything that we have been putting out on the internet, and you have done nothing about it. I have emailed you the link pack full of undeniable evidence, and you have done nothing, not a single response from you or the mayor. I said, so my question is, why have you done nothing? Why haven't you done your job? Why have you failed to protect the safety of the citizens of Wilmington, Ohio? Um, also, Mr. Shidiker, Mr. Mayor, I have reached out to both of you with solid evidence and extremely reasonable complaints, and neither one of you have ever responded to any of my inquiries, not even once. Why is that, I ask you? Why do you refuse to do your job and to do the right thing? Please, I'd like to know, in a written response, thank you.
Well timed.
I'm getting pretty good, I'm getting good. And here, I would like to give this to you because I don't want my questions out of context, there's the exact one, word for word, thank you.
That is very helpful. So, uh, next we have, uh, Tony Thomas to report, Mr. Speaker. Uh, yeah, like I said, I don't know how much battery we can look, but you are welcome to. Is it? You let, you know when you're ready.
Uh, before I start, I think, um.
You already started if you're talking.
Well, I'm, an apology doesn't count as talking, if you, if you give me a moment, sir, I mean, there's, there's a bad handle there, I'm, I'm extending apologies to myself who have been rooted here, to, to a couple of my, but what you witnessed is, is people who are at the witness, who have been victims, um, and they're sick of it. I mean, I lost my home by criminal acts by his dad, and I would prove it to you guys, I served every one of you, almost died.
That's not making correct accusation.
So, I, I admit it's fact, so I'll go ahead and, are you ready?
I'm ready, there you go.
Many people I have spoken with, including myself, are not receiving, uh, our public records request. Almost all are well beyond a reasonable amount of time, as mentioned in our sunshine laws. When we do not get our requests, we seem to only, uh, be getting bits and pieces and not the entirety. Um, some, someone I have spoke with has come forward about a rape involving one of the suspects from the Casey Pittsir case and has requested the details of her own rape kit and DNA profile from the Wilmington PD. She made this, this records request back in November, and her records request has yet to be fulfilled. When will, when will she receive her records request so that we can look into her own case? This is a very serious matter, and she can't get her own records. Greg Pittsir is still awaiting his request for all of the email communications regarding his daughter, Casey Pittsir. It's been months. He has also requested to review, uh, the videos from Uncle Louis and Walmart, it's been months and months and months on, on that as well. He deserves to, to see the videos. A, a woman, five foot two, called Wilmington PD, uh, because she was having, having mental issues, the police showed up to the woman's home, and she was holding a knife. The SWAT team was called in and her, uh, her house was surrounded, sheriff's office Doug S, uh, Doug Esses was called in as a negotiator. A move was made, and the woman had a twelve-inch knife sticking out of her neck, putting her into a coma and nearly killing her. There are multiple police body cam videos of this incident. Those videos have been requested by multiple people, including the woman herself, who was harmed in her own home, uh, during a standoff. The city has denied to release the body cam, even, even though, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, has, uh, said publicly that you wanted citizens to request the body cams to ensure accountability. We're doing that, and it's not, accountability is not being served. A Wilmington city police officer refused to give a statement without his attorney, um, present. So, please, why is this body cam video being released? Uh, the excuse has been that it's too graphic. The fact is, is horrifying body cam videos of police shootings and deadly incidents are released all the time, but now, but not here in Wilmington, Ohio, why is that? Why won't the city release the body cam and the incident, the victim of the incident? Is this to avoid legal repercussions and a potential lawsuit against the city? I know, uh, Mr. Petrie has requested, uh, that, uh, make back in December have not been fulfilled. Those requests included the following, but not limited to, copies of the contracts that were paid out for the bypass, traffic engineering studies before the bypass was constructed. Number two, all grants awarded to the city and the checks and balances of the funds, uh, from the contracts, or from those grants. Number three, sales and destruction records for the confiscated forfeited unclaimed court releases, uh, court release guns that have been obtained.
You can please, sir.
Yes, uh, the city's public records are, are a retention list, and list of contracts and suppliers that the city has been, uh, purchasing, um, purchasing office furniture, office supplies, janitorial supplies, PPE, office, uh, lighting and promotional materials.
That's everyone that was on the list.
All right, that, uh, includes the open public section meeting, are there any council members who wish to address this tonight?
I, I have. Uh, you, you know you're about to open indoor box, not sure, I had several people reach out to me and ask me about the, uh, forgive me, the, the plastic stakes that are on my head.
The delineators.
The linia. Um, and I asked, uh, Brian Shidker about that, and that's still an ODOT project, yes? So, are they replacing those? The, long story short is, the, I had people ask me how much they cost per, per state. I have no idea what, I, I figured it was probably, I had no basis, I was like, probably more than a good thing, but I have no idea, so. I don't know if we had answers for those, or if it's still.
That's why I had them remove all the delineators out in front of Skyline Chili and, uh, trustee, trustee insurance. Those were our delineators.
Okay.
Which we have, and, and.
Is that from the Owee Avenue just being?
No, it's from.
From that project?
No, from when they were brand new, put in that morning and taken out that after.
So, we're using existing supply, okay?
Yeah, we're using existing supply, and in fact, there were some, the boxes were never even opened, because they were gonna run them all the way down the promenade avenue, and they were already bought and paid for in the project. So, the state of Ohio said, where do you want to store them?
Okay.
So, the cost to us, labor, everybody.
Well, I mean, we're paying for project, but that's.
No, I'm saying they're already paid, they're already paid for.
They're in, they're in the project, okay. That's what I needed to know.
So, when are they gonna be replaced?
I don't know. Well, at this point, that would still be ODOT.
Um, I actually don't know the answer to that.
I mean, we could do it, yeah, I mean, we can.
You know, if they, their contractor did install them, I don't know if we can expect them to go out and do the same.
We could do it. It could be cheap if we did.
There's gonna be a lot of it.
Yeah, I mean, there was, I, one of the, one of the things I kept, like, we know if you hit a telephone pole, you have to take. That's like, yeah, I don't know that, I don't know.
Well, people who ran into them might be glad to know.
I don't know, but, and that was, but it was asked me, like, so are they, are they gonna start charging people for it, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, if I could find out who ran into them, absolutely.
It was all the snow. It was all the snow from the snowstorm. When they were plowing, they, they pushed the snow.
Your own plows took them out.
We don't know that.
Well, you don't know that in person.
No, it was also private contractors that have snow plows, there's also the state of Ohio that drives down that street, and their plows are larger than ours. I don't, I don't necessarily think someone did it intentionally, I think they had their snow plow wider than what they thought. It was a whiteout condition, they're not used to those, but this is what I'm hoping, I'm hoping it wasn't some dummy that just went out there and said, I'm wiping these suckers out.
I haven't looked yet, was there any damage to the curb?
No.
Okay, I would think the snow, you know, I don't know, that's, if there's no damage to the concrete, then that makes me wonder.
Well, there's actually no concrete up there.
The island?
No.
No, windy.
The, the island is made of concrete. The island you're talking about.
Part of windy.
The only island on Romback. The, the crosswalk.
Yes.
No, no, they didn't, no, and that's, that's the real solution, if they continue to take out the delineators, we'll put it in concrete. We pay for everything.
I would not support that, I want that to be on the record.
Well, then you stopped the left turns are illegal, don't you?
Anybody else have questions?
Uh, Mr. President, I want to thank, uh, I do this every year, but, um, I wanna thank the employees that worked on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, New Year's Eve and New, and New Year's Day, um, they do so much for us, and while we're at home with our families, uh, they're, they're getting it done. And I, I know, Chief, you went out New Year's Eve, um, it, it is much appreciated, um, because we are, we are a family, and they take wonderful care of our city during the holidays, and they should not be forgotten, so I just, I do that every year, I, I, I always try to remember, but, um, it's a special time, and, and they give up a lot of family time for us, so it's just much appreciated, thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Well, and as Mayor mentioned earlier, that was in the middle of Colts now.
Oh, buddy.
They, they had to respond to my workplace.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
Okay, what else have comments? Uh, I would ask for motion.